We'll actually start with the gentleman on the end.
Jeffrey Stevens, City Council, Ward 1.
Bill Manson, Park Board.
Derek Moorhead, Ward 2, City Council.
Jay Holman, City Council.
Charlene Hume, City Council, Ward 4.
There we go. I'm Sonya Abdalgabad and I'm also on the City Council for Ward 4.
Jason Boehner, City Council, Ward 3.
Monique Lewis, Park Board.
Jim Haddock, Park Board, Ward 4.
Brian Harris, Park Board.
Emers, Park Board.
Kevin Kellogg, City Council, Ward 1.
I'm Ryan Westcoat. I'm a Ward 2 City Councilman and the Mayor Pro Tem and the MC for tonight.
Melinda Howdyshell, Park Board.
John Kennedy Parks, Recreation.
All right, like I said, there were a lot of new faces, so everybody welcome. We are going to have a presentation tonight on our citizen survey and a market analysis. And I'm going to turn that over to Kerry Newman, who's with SFS Architecture. So he's going to do the presentation. After the presentation, we'll open the floor up for questions. And then after this first part of the meeting, we're going to take a brief recess. So that way we can mingle a little bit more and then the City Council will come back for our regular work session. So, Mr. Newman, we will give you the floor, sir. And then we will follow that up with the market analysis, summary of the market analysis. Darren Barr with Ballard King is here to present that. Then we'll have a quick summary of kind of the highlights of the two documents. And then we really want to spend most of our time tonight just answering questions. And I know there'll be a lot of discussion, so that will be the last part of our presentation. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ron.
Jim has said that when I walk around, I hold my speaker about right here. So I'm going to try, if it's okay, and if you all don't mind here, I'm going to try to be facing this way. Is that okay? Does anybody have a problem? That way I won't really goof it up. So bottom line, upfront in regards to the survey. Forty-six percent of respondents use one facility in other communities. Twenty-two percent use private clubs. Twenty-two percent are very satisfied that their needs for indoor programming spaces are being met. By the way, I might tell you that it was a very, very wise decision going with 300 surveys instead of 400 surveys. We wound up, I think, with close to 600 surveys completed. So you wound up paying for 300 and got about twice as many. And really what it shows is that this is an issue that's really important in the community. Because, you know, when a lot of people respond, that means that there's something that they're very interested in. So when we asked people what were the indoor program spaces that were most important to them? Number 1 was an indoor running and walking track. Number 2 was a weight room cardiovascular equipment area. Number 3 was aerobic fitness space. And number 4 was multipurpose courts for basketball and volleyball. So as we talked about before, you know, you're three out of the four right at the top end are exercise-related facilities. Forty-eight percent of respondents indicated they would visit a new civic center several times per week. And I could tell you, having done, you know, probably 100 or more feasibility study surveys, that's a high percentage. Anytime that you get over a third of the people saying that they would use it several times per month, that's a good number. Excuse me, several times per week, that's a good number. An additional 17% indicated they would visit once per week. If, and the most important thing of this, besides the fact that you'd have heavy usages, if the civic center contained the features that people indicated were most important to them. So it's not that, hey, if you put in there arts and craft rooms and you don't put it in a walking track and you don't put in, you know, weight room area, we'll still visit a few times a week. It won't happen. I mean, they're specifically saying if you designed this center, the civic center, the way we indicated we'd like you to design it, will be there a few times a week, and 17%. So you're talking about, you know, about 60% of the households saying that they've visited, potentially visited on a weekly basis. Eighteen percent indicated they would visit less than once a month or never. And so really, when I look at it, if people say once a month, once a month is kind of like never, you know, in a sense. The vast majority, a high, high majority of respondents support charging user fees for programs, activities, and facilities. That was a big topic. We spent a lot of time on that in developing the survey. And it's definitely something that people say, okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. They need to do that for classes, activities, what have you. Two-thirds of respondents indicated their preferred method of paying user fees would be annual family passes or individual annual passes. And the interesting thing about that is if you go back, if I may, and you look at what percentage of people would utilize the facility on an ongoing basis, you had 48% indicated they utilize it several times per week. And you've got 17% saying they utilize it once per week at least. So that's 58, that's about 65% of the people. So basically, the people who say that they would use it on a weekly basis are saying it makes the most sense to them to have a annual pass. And basically, and Darren will talk a lot more about it, but the annual passes is something that's a steady stream of income. That's a good thing to have. Seventy-six percent of respondents felt the cost of operation should be paid through a combination of user fees and taxes. Now, of the other 24%, more felt that it should be paid completely from user fees than thought it should be paid from taxes. But that's, 76% obviously represents three-quarters of the people who see the worth of both of those. Sixty-seven percent of respondents would be very or somewhat supportive of the city of Raymore issuing a general obligation bond, obligation property tax bond and using revenues to build a new civic center with the understanding the property tax bond would not result in any additional tax costs but would prevent their property tax bill from decreasing. This is again, an issue that we talked a lot about. And I think, as with the fees, I think we absolutely made the right decision on the survey to break this down into two different questions. The first question would be, would you support this issue in utilizing this if it was a rollover? Your taxes wouldn't decrease, but they wouldn't increase. You can see it's pretty resounding that people would say, yep, that sounds like a good deal. Now, when you get into increasing property taxes, then you run into some other issues. Forty-nine percent of respondents would be willing to pay some additional property taxes to develop and operate a new center if it had the programming spaces they most preferred. Fifty-two percent of households would vote in favor and 23% might vote in favor to develop a new civic center with the features that are most important. So you're really seeing that it's much, much tighter when you start looking at increasing tax revenues to support the facility. And then it gets into when we ask people how much they'd be willing to pay in tax revenues. And there's a correspondence between, you know, that they would vote in favor depending on how much that tax bill. So that was a really good decision. So let's look at it real quickly as far as these charts. We asked a series of about 18 things, what could be in the center. And then we asked what's the most important, what's most likely used, the second one, most likely used, and the third most likely. And those long blue lines represents first choices. So you can see first choice of indoor running, walking track, weight room, aerobic fitness space. They're all about 20%. So about, about half of the people who indicate that they would utilize the facility, their first choices are those three things. Basically, what that means is probably this facility wouldn't pass without, if you didn't have all of those three things. Because they're very, very important to people. And particularly, you could see 53% of people are saying an indoor running, walking track. And we talked about that. That's, that's probably the most essential thing to have in the facility. Because it's not a huge, huge cost, but it's so important to people. And then you can walk down, you can see non-chosen about 14% and then others about 16%. And the others, quite frankly, a lot of them are reiterating something that you've already got. They just want to add some further weight to it, things of that nature. So you can see 80-some percent, you know, a large usage, seven times per week. You can see by far the biggest, and that's a good number. Seventeen percent once a week as far as visitation. Never 11%. And if you can see going back, non-chosen is 14%. That margin of error is about 3%. If they've got non-chosen, that means there's nothing in there they want to do. They're pretty much, they're not going to visit it. And they're very consistent on that. But that's not a big number. That's not a big number. But I think you normally have to add up that 11% and the 7%. So that's 18% and probably even the more monthly, the 22%. That's really not huge support. Because visiting it on a monthly basis or a few times a year or never, that's not huge support for a tax issue. Then you get into the level of support. You can see that people who are very supportive of paying fees for things is in the blue and not supportive in the red. So you can see in almost every area, there's at least twice as, about twice as many people who would be very supportive of paying fees as opposed to not supportive. The things, the things that they're, the easiest to spend money on is renting a room. We spend a lot of time on that, you know, that wordage there. Participating in aerobics and exercise classes, using cardio equipment, participating in adult sports, participating in youth sports. The important thing about that is, since, since exercise facilities are so important, the fact that people are willing to pay fees for that is a significantly good sign. Now, the things that people would not be willing to pay as much fees is using the senior, senior citizens lounge, using a teen center, those two things in particular. But as we talked about before, there's a difference between using a senior center lounge and a senior using fitness equipment. You know, and there's a huge difference because there's people, you know, I'm 64. I was only 63 the last time I was here. I don't feel a year older, but I am. So, but there may be a difference. Using a senior lounge may be something I would just use on an occasion. And I probably wouldn't be willing to spend a lot of money for it to, you know, meet with other people. But using exercise equipment is something different and I'd probably do both things. Respondents' preferred method of paying, you can see that annual pass and the individual annual pass. And we talked about that before, that that's real close to those who would utilize it on a weekly basis. And the important thing for you also on something of that nature is people are understanding the questions. Sometimes you look and we're asking the same question, like, or a little bit different. But when you see that people are answering similarly, that really shows you people are understanding their question. Statement of best response, how, cost for operations. You've got 38% say fees from users should pay the majority. You've got 37% say that taxes should pay the majority. So almost exactly a split. Then you've got 100% through taxes, 23% through fees. So what this says, and Darren knows a lot more about this, is that it's a split, but it's not necessarily a 50-50 split. Because you have a lot more, you have about a quarter of the people who say it should be paid completely from fees. Get down to issuing property taxes, that does not result in any additional taxes. Well, very supportive 39%, somewhat supportive 28%, not sure 12%, not supportive 22%. I like to, from a bond referendum standpoint, I always liked, even though this is supportive, 22% not supportive is a little higher than I like to see right at the bat. And 39% very supportive is a drop lower. I like to see very supportive around 40%, 41%, 42% right at the beginning. I like to see not supporter a little bit less than 20%. So probably either way, you're going to have some opposition, I guess we might say. Even if it's just, you know, no income, or no property tax increase. There will probably be, or possibly, I shouldn't say probably, possibly be some opposition. Obviously, it's going to depend a lot on what facilities you have, you know, involved with it. When you get into how much you'd pay in additional property taxes, that's where you could see where it's problematic. Because 39% are saying no property tax increase at all. Now, that's a bigger number. You know, I just said, anytime that it's 20% or higher, it's not great. This is almost double that. And then when you get into the not sure's, that's about, you know, that's about 50%. And the big increase is up to 10% and maybe 11 to 20. And so that's about 40%. So what you're really looking at is if it is a, I think I could say this pretty confidently, that if there was some type of a property tax increase, it would have to be a smaller one. And even a smaller one is going to cause it to be a little bit more tighter, definitely. But I think it would be very, very problematic to go higher than a smaller one. And then vote in favor, 52%. Now, that's a good number. I will tell you that. That is a real good number, 52%. Vote against, 16%. That's a really good number. I mean, if I was just taking that and didn't take the additional, I would be saying, hey, that's indicative that this issue, without a property tax increase, we probably would have a good chance of passing. Because that's a good number. Might vote in favor, 23%, not sure, 9%. Not a lot of people are not sure. Most people have an opinion about this. I guess it's been talked in my phone a lot. And that's it. And I'll, should I turn it over to? Thank you.
Then I'm going to be the guy that is going to wander around and flail my arms and everything. Is that better? Okay, great. As Ron said, there's a couple slides here for the demographics that goes ahead and breaks down who responded to the survey. That is information that was collected, so that goes ahead and relates back to the information that was gathered. Ballard King and Associates was tasked with going ahead and completing a competitive market analysis for this study. And with that, we went ahead and worked with you to identify a primary and a secondary service area. Primary service area was identified with the city boundaries. The secondary service area is kind of an amalgamation. So it takes a look at your top circle here. Top part of the circle represents what a five-mile radius would be from a center point in Raymore, with the bottom section being about a seven-mile radius and those connecting through. So the other question that comes up when I talk about a primary and a secondary service area is, what's the difference? Okay? Primary service area typically represents who's going to use the facility on a consistent basis, on a weekly basis. And that goes back to some of the information that Ron shared with us about how often folks would use a facility. Secondary service area, the degree to which you have people use your facility from the secondary service area, a lot of times that's dependent upon the amenities that are included. How far will that reach? If you go ahead and include an indoor turf facility, let's say, that's going to have more of a regional draw. Or a big 50-meter competitive pool or an ice arena, that secondary service area can grow. You go ahead and if you have some more common components or components that maybe don't have that regional draw, you could see that secondary service area contract. But both of those are fairly conservative in nature and represent areas where we think we could go ahead and draw people from. When Kerry asked me to put this information together, he kind of said, what's the information we really need to focus on? And Ron shared a lot of numbers with you already and I'm pretty sure I could put you to sleep with all the numbers that are in my report. So we'll try and keep it to the important stuff. So when you go ahead and when you talk about a study, a feasibility study, we talk about what are some key indicators? What are some things that we really, really want to know and that are going to determine whether or not a facility would be successful? Here's kind of those key indicators. Median age, median income, household budget expenditures, and recreation expenditures. Okay? Taking a look at that information goes ahead and gives us a good snapshot as to how successful a civic center or recreation center, a community center, is going to be within your community. Median age. What do we want when we take a look at median age? Well, we want your median age to be lower than what we see on a state national number. Why lower? Well, lower is going to point to the presence of children, families, which are going to be primary users of your facilities. And that's what we find in both the primary and the secondary service area. We find a median age that's both, that's lower than both the national number, slightly higher in the 2013 projection, but then drops down to the 2008. So the blue is your primary service area. This red that kind of comes across as a black is your secondary. The green is the state of Missouri, which is obviously higher than the national number. And then the yellow is your national number. So again, when you're looking at those primary indicators and you say, Darren, do you want a lower median age? Yes, you want a lower median age. And you have that within your community. So that's a very big positive as you go ahead and as you pursue a facility of this nature. When you talk about income, well, you want lower median age and higher median household income. You want people to be able to pay to use facilities like this. And we understand that there's going to be a potential tax of some variety that would go ahead and help a funding facility like this. However, we're in a, what I would call, pay-to-play era. Okay, people are used to going ahead and paying to use these types of services. So by looking at the median household income, we can go ahead and we can determine if there is the propensity to pay. And what we find, again, in the primary service area and in the secondary service area is that you have a higher median household income, approximately $77,000, okay, for median household income projected in 2018, than you, than in the state and on the national number. Again, so if you talk about two out of the three key indicators, lower median age, higher median household income, you guys have that. So you're on track as it relates to supportive of these facilities. And that's consistent with the information that Ron shared from the survey. Household budget expenditures are simply a way to go ahead and measure the cost of living in the area. Okay, and what we have here is I went ahead and I mapped these, this information out so it's side-by-side-by-side. So you have the city of Raymore, the secondary service area, the state number and the national. Obviously, the state of Missouri as a whole significantly less as it relates to the cost of living, as it relates to housing and entertainment and recreation. When we go ahead and we get to the city of Raymore and the secondary service area, secondary service area is only slightly higher in terms of cost of living. Raymore, a little bit more than that. So again, we're being consistent with the median household income. We've been consistent with the median age. There's obviously almost 17%, okay, 15 to 20% higher rate just to spend on entertainment and recreation. People are doing that within the community. So when you go ahead and when you talk about the idea of people having to pay to use a civic center or have a membership or something of that variety, that's not a foreign concept to them. So again, you're heading in the right direction. One of the last key indicators that we look at is we look at recreation spending or the spending potential index. And no different than the household budget expenditures is on that 100 scale. That recreation spending is also on a 100 scale with the national number being 100. Again, in the state of Missouri, you see it's a little bit lower. Higher in the secondary service area and even higher again with the city of Raymore. So things like paying for participant sports, paying for recreation lessons, exercise equipment and game tables, other sports. All of that information is higher, which means there's a willingness on the community's part, on residents' part, to go ahead and pay for that information. Does that make sense? There's not a lot of head nodding, but nobody's nodding off, so it seems like I'm on the right track. Okay? Okay, so out of the four key indicators, when we talk about median age, median income, household budget expenditures, recreation spending, you're all in the ballpark, okay? You have a lower median age, higher median income. Your household budget expenditures are consistent with those numbers. And you already have a great deal of the community that's spending dollars on recreation and entertainment within the community. It's all consistent when you go ahead and you start to point to the idea of developing a civic center. In addition to this, we also took a look at age distribution. Okay, we didn't just focus on the big numbers. We went ahead and we looked, we looked at the age distribution, we looked at the growth, we looked at race and ethnicity. I could show you all of that, but I'm certain I would lose all of you very quickly. So we're just going to go ahead and we're going to take a look at age distribution more than anything. And again, similar to the previous slides, we're kind of comparing this information on a side-by-side-by-side basis. So we had the national kind of distribution that says, okay, the minus-five age group, 5 to 17, 18 to 24. And then we go ahead and we put Raymore in the secondary service area side-by-side. One of the things that I think is kind of interesting is both with the city of Raymore and the secondary service area. When you talk about individuals less than 18 years of age, you're talking more than 25% of the population. Okay? Key users of facilities, all right? I don't want to alienate anybody in the room, so I think the other important part to take a look at is when you talk about age 55 and older, okay? Again, you're talking 25%. It's important to understand when you're talking about a civic center, it's not just a place where families are going to go, it's not just a place where kids are going to go. It can have an appeal to a wide variety of the age distribution. So while you have a younger population, while you have a significant number of kids, youth in the area, while you have a significant number of families, you have to remember that you have this population on the other end of the age spectrum that can also be significant users of the facility. And in particular, their use of the facility coincides with times of the day where the other demographic is not using the facility. So in the morning time, if you open a facility and it has some of the components that Ron refers to, you'll go ahead and you'll see the professionals going ahead and coming in and getting a workout before they head off to work. As they go ahead and leave the building, you've got some of the retirees that are coming in. I was going to say seniors, but I was afraid I was going to get something thrown at me. So the retirees that are coming in, they're using the facilities, going ahead and going to meetings, doing what they're doing. You have the stay-at-home parents who come in with the kids, hit midday, get a nice workout in. Maybe they drop the kids off, bit of a lull in your afternoon. And then you hit 3 o'clock and you start to ramp up until the day's end. So, and with a drop-off after 8. So again, it's important to understand where your demographics are at and understand that all of that age group and all of those ages can use a facility of this nature. This is a lot of numbers. What you have here, and one of the things that we go ahead and that we do, is it doesn't make a bit of difference for Darren Barr to stand up in front of you and tell you that I think aerobic exercising is going to be something your community is going to want to do. Okay, I need to put that in a context. So the context that we go ahead and use for that information is produced by the National Sporting Goods Association. So on an annual basis, they do a survey and talk about how Americans are spending their time. And what we're able to do is we're able to take the numbers that they create based upon median income, the region of the country, your age distribution, and the national number. And we average those four together to give you a specific percentage for the city of Raymore. So the column that's over on the left-hand side here is the average that we've developed for Raymore. Next to it is the national number. So you'll see there's some differences here. Where we're talking about potentially in Raymore, you're going to have a few more people that might participate in aerobic exercise. Remember that indoor walking track that everybody wanted to have in the facility? Well, yeah, about 37% of your population, based on statistics, is going to go ahead and use that. Same thing with exercising with equipment, 21%, okay? Aerobic exercising, exercise walking, exercise with equipment, swimming, those are usually your top three or four. When you go ahead and you look at your survey responses, that was consistent, okay? I know that's a question. How do we make our facility unique and can it have unique components? Yes, absolutely, it can. But those are some of the mainstays that you see in facilities. And that's the reason why. If you're going to build a facility, you're going to want it to appeal to the broadest population possible. And in order to do that, you're going to have to include some of those common activities. The last three columns simply go ahead and give you an idea of how things are changing, okay? Giving you total population, so 44.8, these are in millions, okay? 44.8 million people participated in aerobic exercise in 2012. Only 28.3 participated in 2013. So you can see how the various activities are trending. If you guys have not seen lacrosse arrive in Raymore yet, you're going to. It's going to happen, okay? That growth of 125%, yeah, that's since 2007, not 2003. Same thing for yoga. Why do we see yoga studios popping up all over the place? That growth rate is from 2006, not 2003. So you see that there's some trends there. Again, we're not trying to tell you you absolutely have to be like everybody else. However, here's some objective information so that when you go ahead and you do make decisions on what to move forward with, you have that information. And we have that in our report. We even take that percentage and apply it to your population so you can see how an organ, how a group might trend or an activity might trend within the community. In addition to this National Sporting Goods Association information, we also have some information in our report from the National Endowment of Arts as well. So I think that's one of the other things that's important when you start talking about a civic center is, yes, it is a place where you can go work out, where you can have social time. time, have meetings, but there's also opportunities to go ahead and cultural enhancement and cultural enrichment, okay? A lot of times, you won't see a city necessarily employ those staff members to go ahead and teach those activities. A lot of times, that's done through contract workers, and there might be other communities within the area that are doing some of those same programs. But that's another opportunity with a facility of this nature. One of the last things that we did in this, you won't find this in the report that we've created, but we are going to add it, is just take a look at who the other providers are in the area. So we need to understand that you have, Grandview has a facility, Lee Summit has a facility, Harrisonville, Pleasant Hill, there's a YMCA up here. You do have other providers within the community. I think that's an important thing to acknowledge, and it's not something that I want you to go ahead and shy away from. There's some anecdotal information, especially when some of the private providers, the health club providers, exercise providers, get a little upset if you start talking about including that component within your facility. But there's some really good evidence from other communities that we've worked in across the country, that a civic center like what you're talking about, that contains that type of equipment, actually becomes a gateway for people to go ahead and then move into the private arena. If it, if you're talking about fitness, for example, you're not going to be the end-all, be-all fitness center. You're going to have some free weight machines, you're probably going to have some selectorized equipment, you're not going to have powerlifting equipment, you're not going to have a bunch of squat racks across the back wall. You're going to have some of that. So somebody who has a more sedentary lifestyle, who maybe would be uncomfortable going to a private health club, will come to you to use your facility. But they also, and you hope, they might outgrow your facility with their needs, in which case, they move on to a private provider. But this is something that we go ahead and that we take into account, and as you go ahead and as you begin to talk about those facility components, it's important to have an understanding of who those other providers are in the community, and take a look at what you might be able to include in your facility or in your program offerings that are going to make you unique to the environment that you're in. With that, I think Carrie is going to wrap it up.
Just to finish up, just a couple of quick comments summary-wise. There obviously is very good community interest in this civic center. As Ron mentioned, you know, 581 surveys, that's a lot, that's a lot of response, so we know there's interest. You know, some of the other percentages really jumped out to me. 65% would visit the civic center at least one time per week, that's a very high percentage. 67% are supportive of a no-tax increase geobond. Those are all very positive. The next one on here, actually, there's a typo, it's not 61, that's 49, I apologize for that mistake, but 49% willing to pay for some level of additional, additional property taxes. This is where I think we get into a gray area, and I think the other ones are very positive, especially when you're, when you consider where we are, where we are in this process, where the community hasn't really even seen what they might be getting. So I think that's positive, but the things that are kind of in the gray area and definitely not, a no-brainer, are the vote, the voter issues. So those are, those are some, just some overall comments on the survey. On the market analysis, I think there's some very positive indicators there. The growing population and the demographics are positive. You know, the, the income level of your citizens is also very positive for supporting entertainment and recreation facilities. The, you know, the level of anticipated participants is very high for what we've seen in similar surveys and market analysis. So I think that, that is all very, very positive. The thing that we really need to temper those two things with, though, are the competing service providers. The facility in Belton is obviously an issue. There were a ton of comments in the survey about Belton facility, some of them being more along the sentiments of, you know, we want our own facility, we'd rather spend our money in Raymore. But there are also those comments that don't duplicate what we have in Belton already. So those are, that's what really we need to temper the other information with. And then finally, you know, thinking about a potential civic center in Raymore, there are several questions that remain to be answered. Number one, program and features, you know, what, what would the facility have in it? You know, can we include the highly-ranked programs that Ron talked about, along with some unique features? You know, do we look at more of a fieldhouse concept, like Darren mentioned, where there's indoor turf, along with those highly-ranked features from the survey? Can there be cultural enrichment opportunities? Those are all things that would need to be examined and decide whether that's appropriate for Raymore. The level of subsidy that's required by the city, what we need to do to determine that is really develop this program, look at operational costs, how much it costs to actually operate the facility, and how much can you anticipate the income? So that you can weigh those against each other and decide whether there is a subsidy required, and if so, what level would that be? And then finally, just a question for the governing body is, you know, if this is an affordable facility to build, affordable to operate, is this really something that the city would like to provide as kind of a basic level of service for the citizens of Raymore in Raymore? So that's really a question of policy and desire of the governing body. So those are just some observations of the two facility, of the two, the two documents that were provided to you, and we would like to spend the rest of the time tonight just answering questions and discussions that you might have. I'm sure you have lots of questions, so.
Are there questions? The first one I'd like to ask is, what's the confidence index with the survey?
It's 95% level of confidence and a margin of error plus or minus 4%.
Plus or minus 12?
Plus or minus 4%.
Four.
Which basically means that if we administered this survey 100 times in the Raymore community, 95 out of 100 times, the results would be, as you see them, plus or minus 4 percentage points.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
You mentioned in here that most of these centers are about 65,000 to 75,000 square feet where they have pools. Do you have any idea, let's say, like a 40,000 to 45,000 square foot facility without a pool, how much the operating cost would be for a year? Would you have any idea?
Off the top of my head, no. You know, the aquatics portion is going to take a significant amount of resources as it relates to staffing and also as it relates to utilities, simply because those are 24/7, 365 operations. Boy, I hadn't really done any operational projections coming into tonight to, to give you that number. When we talk about that 65,000 to 75,000 square foot with aquatics being involved, that's what we see a lot of times just from a standpoint of when people approach us with the idea of wanting to make the facility as operationally efficient as possible. Typically, that conversation begins with, we want this to be as cash-neutral as possible. By removing the aquatics from that equation, you go ahead and you remove a significant amount of expense, but you also remove some synergy between those components. A lot of times, the aquatics area is what brings the younger families in, and then they go ahead and use the rest of the facility. You're probably in a facility like that, you're probably talking five to six full-time staff members. You're probably talking, for a 50,000 square foot building with no aquatics, you're probably talking an annual utility bill somewhere in the 150,000 to 200,000 dollar range. Again, we, we haven't gone through that number-crunching exercise yet, but that would be part of the next steps. Sorry.
Councilmember Holman?
Do you have, do you have any numbers on the, the operating ratio for the, the service competing entities within the secondary service area as far as the public facilities? What their operating ratios typically run at?
Operating ratios in terms of what their cost recovery level is?
Yeah, like, you know, they, yes.
Yeah. We've gone ahead and we've worked with a lot of those communities, Lee Summit in particular, and also with Grandview. So Lee Summit, I believe, they, the conversation started off that they wanted to be 100% cost recovery. At last check, which gave me, it's a year or two removed from that, they were coming very close to that goal. Some of that, when you begin the conversation, and I'm going to digress for just a second, when you go ahead and you begin the conversation of you want your civic center to be 100% cost recovery, well, what does that mean to you? Do you want it to recover all the operating costs? Do you want it to recover debt service on top of it? How are you going to go ahead and how are you going to staff the facility? There's recreation facilities that are out there, civic centers that will tell you they're 100% cost recovery, but then you come to find out, well, the administrative cost has sunk back into the parks and the maintenance of the facility has sunk back into parks. So it, it kind of becomes a shell game in some instances. I believe Grandview is in that 65 to 75% cost recovery range. I wasn't involved with that initial study, one of the, our partners was, but that's information that we could absolutely provide and go into another level, just so that you have an idea of where that lays. Most community centers, civic centers that have a demographic that's similar to yours are going to start off in that 65 to 75% cost recovery rate and then climb. The days of 100% cost recovery are few and far between, simply because of the number of providers that are in the area.
Just a follow-up question, that's a little bit surprising to me. I figured it would be just the opposite. It's, you would anticipate our cost recovery to climb as opposed to decline over time?
No, I, I'm sorry, if I misspoke. You, you started in that 65 to 70% cost recovery, and then it would climb from there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. In regards to longevity, lifespan of a civic center, have, do you have any numbers on how long of the lifespan or reasonable expectation of, that we would have for a facility that would have many of the, you know, and to be, I, amenities, thank you, amenities that you spoke about, you know, what, because what, what concerns me is that, you know, kind of on a, on a parallel, the Grandview triangle, it was sold us, it's, you know, and not that it's not a bad, a good thing or a bad thing, it, you know, God bless the Grandview triangle because it makes life a lot easier to go into work. But what many people don't realize is that the expected, expectation of its lifespan was 30 years, and it took us six years to even get that built. So basically, we're down to about 25 years left of, you know, usefulness out of the Grandview triangle. Does that make sense? And that's my question.
Yeah. The facilities, you know, it really kind of depends on, obviously, the materials and that you utilize for the facility, but definitely 30 years would be, for us, kind of a minimum and greater. You know, 30 to 50 years is kind of a physical, you know, condition, life, you know, life, life cycle for a facility. Now, when Darren was talking about the pro forma and operational cost, a big part of that is also setting aside a budget for maintenance and an upkeep of a facility, which is very important. That can also make a huge difference in the, in the amount of time that it takes, you know, for it to deteriorate, as long as it's maintained properly. But having that budget set aside to cover improvements over time, we know that there's going to be roof, you know, replacement at some point in time. There's all those things that need to be maintained. So as long as that, there is a fund to maintain the facility, it should be a minimum of 30
Sorry. We try and recommend that organizations allocate, depending upon the components, anywhere from 50 to 75,000 dollars on an annual basis. Typically, you're not going to have to access that until you get into year five of your operation, but by that time, you have close to a quarter of a million dollars, hopefully a little bit more, available so that you can go ahead and you can make improvements to the facility, whether that's a fresh coat of paint, or whether you're having to look at air handling systems. Some of the big-ticket items, if aquatics is not included, go away, whether it comes down to replastering or resealing aquatic facilities. So that's just a practice that we like to go ahead and we like to encourage folks to, to take part in, or at least map out, working with Carrie and, and construction folks, to have an idea, okay, what's the life expectancy of this air handling unit, and what's the cost now, so that we can project what our capital improvement budget needs to be for the facility.
Did you have a question?
On your spreadsheet, swimming was 17.3%, which outranked aerobic and running, jogging. And on your important comments at the back, I highlighted pool. I lost count how many times pool I highlighted. It wasn't given as a choice on the survey? Is there a reason for that?
There was a tremendous amount of discussion in regards to whether the pool should be indicated on the survey, and I think that consensus was that the cost of developing a pool and the, particularly the cost of developing the pool would be prohibitive based upon a scenario of moving forward with the project with a no-property tax increase. And so there was, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I, I think that there was a, a feeling that it may misrepresent what's possible by putting the pool in there. There was an awful lot of discussion in regards to it. I think what's insignificant, though, in my mind, is although there's a tremendous amount of write-in information on the pool, the answers to the questions were based upon not having a pool. So in other words, when people said how often they would visit the facility, they were saying how often they would visit the facility without a pool. So when they were saying how, how they would vote, they were saying how they would vote without a pool. So I, I think it was a very, very good decision. I think everyone, I, I think the vast majority of people knew that there would be a lot of support for the pool, but I think, but when you look at the survey as written, those answers as far as usage, weekly usage, several times-a-week usage, voter support for it, are all based on a facility that does not have a pool.
Let's, let's go back to cost recovery for just a moment. When you talk about approaching 100% cost recovery, is it easier to approach that point with a facility that does not have any type of aquatics in it? You know, I've, I've talked with several people through our, our MML conferences, and one of them said that they've never seen a, a pool or an aquatic center ever pay for itself, because of just the expense of it. I know that the Longview Community College, they have that discussion whether or not to close their pool every single year because it's a drain on their resources. Is it easier for us to approach 100% cost recovery without that aspect?
Well, first, when you go to a pool and you hear that sucking sound on the drain, it, it's water and it's money. Sorry, bad joke. But that, it's not an uncommon sentiment. Worked in many facilities where the aquatic operation was offset. We were never, it was never a plan to go ahead and recover 100% of aquatics, simply because it is so difficult and because of dollars and cents associated with utilities and staffing and just the sheer cost of operation. Can you get closer without aquatics? Well, you're, you're eliminating a major expense, so the knee-jerk reaction is going to be, yes, you can. I think the other thing that's important to keep in mind is that when we go ahead and when we develop an operational plan for a facility, we, we do it with the idea that some of the components are going to play off of one another. In other words, if you were just to develop a weight and cardio studio, that would only appeal to a certain percentage of the population. But if you add a track to that, well, then you increase. And if you add a gym to that, you increase a little bit more. So I think that because of not including that expense, do you have a better opportunity? Yeah, you do have a better opportunity. I would also go ahead and would suggest that if you, for example purposes, not to suggest you should include aquatics, but you would also have, if you did have an aquatic component included, you could expect that you would have a greater number of passes. included, you could expect that you would have a greater number of passes sold within the same facility.
Remember how to show?
Just one thing that's a little bit of a different scenario, because I think it does come up all the time, is if the question would have been, would gross revenues be higher in the facility? I'm pretty sure Darren's answer would have been, yes, gross revenues would be higher. If the question was, would gross expenditures be higher, the question would be, yes, gross expenditures would be higher. And so then, if the third question was, would gross revenues be higher, the increase in gross revenues be higher than the increase in gross expenditures, then in a sense is the question, and generally, the answer is it's not. So, I mean, so sometimes you'll run into people and say, well, that's not necessarily true, because I know revenues would be higher. They would be higher, but expenses would also be higher.
Okay, since pool is kind of a vague term, I mean, you know, what do you want a pool for? Do you wanna swim laps in it? Do you wanna cool off in it? Do you want it for your kids? I mean, it is a vague kind of point. So, is there, is it profitable to put something in like a splash park that uses less water, you know, has less, I don't know about maintenance, I mean, I have a pool, and I know it has a lot of maintenance in and of itself, so I, I don't know. But I mean, is that, is that an option? Is that something that, you know, we could kind of be able to serve the people who are speaking rather loudly, that they would like a pool, but yet be able to still do it in a profitable way?
No, I'm getting all the good questions. I referenced the National Sporting Goods Association. They go ahead and they break swimming down in terms of who, who participates in it on a frequent basis, on an occasional basis, and an infrequent basis, okay? Your frequent swimmers who go ahead and visit a pool more than a hundred and twenty-five times a year only accounts for about six point four percent of the total population, okay? The remaining ninety percent go ahead and participate in aquatics on an occasional or an infrequent basis. So occasional, I think we typically factor that at about seventy-five visits, infrequent, maybe fifteen visits on an annual basis. For your infrequent and your occasional participants in aquatics, it's as much about a social activity as it is an actual workout. So going ahead and, when you look at communities that want to have a high level of cost recovery, they're not including my pool, which as a former swimmer is your Olympic fifty-meter by twenty-five yard, they're including my ten-year-old's pool, which is slides and current channels and zero-depth entry and play features, would also goes ahead and accommodates the retirees that wanna go ahead and wanna walk against the current channel and do group exercise and those kinds of things. So, long way to get to your answer, still including an aquatic component like that, like a spray pad, or an outdoor playground that has some water components to it, is gonna go ahead and is going to fulfill the need for a segment of the population. With spray pads and without standing water, we are still seeing organizations staff those areas, so still place a lifeguard or a first responder at that location to go ahead and assist if there is an emergency. This is not going to be a popular statement, but one of the things that I would tell you is, there was a significant amount of support for a facility without aquatics, based upon the survey. If you were to develop a facility and you were to open it on day one, somebody sitting around the table would get the question at least once, why didn't you include a pool? So, I, I think you can go ahead and you can try and supplement in those ways, you can talk about it in terms of phasing. People are gonna want what they want, again.
Do you mind? Okay. But what about profitability? I mean, is, is a spray park like a, you know, money sucker, and, you know, we're gonna lose tons there, as much as we're gonna lose in a pool? Or is it something that is, you know, considered profitable even?
Typically, a spray park is something that people go ahead and just offer as an amenity to use, and it's not something that you make people pay to use. We're based out of Denver, I live in Columbia, so I'll, I'll use Columbia as an example. One of their parks has a spray pad that is just drop-in use, but it's got a gate that can of levers between it and the pool, so when the pool's open, they open the gate, they guard it, it's part of the aquatic facility. When the facility's closed, they close the gate, and it's just general use portion of the park. There is still utilities, you're still gonna have to treat the water, you still have the pumps running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The season for a spray park typically starts at the beginning of May, typically runs through the end of September, so you gain some shoulder season. There's still expenses with it, and especially now, you know, when you start talking about that, plus UV, plus staffing, it would be a nice amenity to have. Is it going to generate a significant amount of revenue? I don't believe it would.
I think the other thing that I believe that Darren was saying is that, since you didn't ask a question about a pool, and you're absolutely right, there's, you know, a pool is, can be so many things to so many people. In fact, it's the same way when you say, what's a civic center look like? That's why we had so many different components of it, the same thing would be with a pool. Once you start dealing with something that's not in the survey, you're opening up the can of worms to deal with anything having to do with water. And I think that you need to be aware of. As soon as you start stepping out of what the survey says, you're gonna be slipping into territory of saying, well, why are we picking on this component, instead of picking on this water component, instead of picking on this water? It makes it, it opens up that potential. I'm not, I'm just simply saying from experience, that's something that probably you guys need to be aware of. It may not just stop at that point.
And the only reason I brought it up was just because your data, number three, was swimming, is the only reason why I brought it up.
It, yeah, it's my data. It's typically, I've been doing this now for seven years, I guess, and every year except one of them, it's come back in the top three. And the reason is when you go ahead and when you take a look at the typical top three, top four, exercise walking, exercise with equipment, swimming and aerobics, the reason is because all four of those activities are activities that people can do from birth to grave. It just spans such a wide age bracket that that's, that's why it's as popular as it is. If, if that data needs to be reworked, we can absolutely do that.
Do we have other questions? See no other questions, I want to thank you gentlemen for your time. And do we wanna go ahead and break at this point? And let's go ahead and we'll take a ten-minute recess for the council. Park Board, thank you for, for your attendance. And council, we have our meeting shortly after.